There. We on camera? Where's our camera?
Meredith, so top right.
I only see the town of Mount Desertville. I don't see the owl. The owl's coming on right now.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
All right.
I hear you in the whole world. We're hearing you here soon.
All right, let's get going. A call to order, the town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting, February 9th, 2022. This is a continuation from the January 12th, 2022 meeting. And first, start off and welcome everybody aboard tonight. We obviously have a hybrid meeting here. Majority of participants are online, it appears. And the rest of us are here in the town meeting hall. Board members present tonight, myself, Chair William Hanley. We've got Tracy Loftus Keller with us here in the meeting room. We've got Christie Anastasia online. We've got Meredith Randolph online.
Hello?
Wait, hold on a second.
Somebody's sharing their screen.
Somebody's taken over the screen. Somebody, Howard, it's Howard. His name is in the upper right corner. You just shared your screen.
Yeah. All right, thank you. So we've got Meredith here. Hi, Meredith, and Dave Ashmore. And with that, Christie, why don't you give us our Zoom protocol speech? Please.
No problem. Hi, I'm Christie Anastasia. I'm a member of the planning board. And for some reason, I'm the person who gives the Zoom spiel. I think I used to control it. I don't really control it anymore. You are on Zoom. If you haven't been on Zoom before, you're in for a treat. If you can make sure that you are muted, if you are not speaking, that's great. Oftentimes, that's in the lower left of your screen. It might be in the upper right, but keep it muted unless you're going to be speaking. If you have comments to make, please make the comments in the conversation of the entire board. We tend to use the chat only for signing in. So if you are here, if you go over to the chat, if you can find it, it says to everyone, type your name, and that way we'll have a list of folks in attendance at this meeting. And you might have noticed this is being recorded. And we can have a couple hundred more people because we have a pretty big Zoom license. So I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. All right, so tonight, again, is a continuation from January 12th. And we are looking at quarry license permit 001, 2014. Owner Harold McQuinn, operator freshwater stone and brick. Agent Steve Salisbury, Harrigan Salisbury, legal rep at SED Bear, residential. Location off the Quarry Road, Hall Quarry, tax map seven, lot 75. Residential one is the zone, and the purpose is to review the quarry license application. And James, let's first clear up that this is not a public hearing.
Right, refreshing your recollection, the last, you closed the public hearing, and you made it very clear, if I remember clear, and Heidi would know better than I would, but at the end of last meeting, that you said, we're gonna come back and just, the board was gonna discuss if there was anything less to do. Yeah, so, so as much as we like Mr. Bear and some of the other people online, we don't hear from them.
Got it. So with that, essentially, we're working towards a final motion on the application tonight.
To deny it.
Yes.
And as you recall, the only thing we had left over was I, in the fit of completeness, mentioned that there may be other reasons to deny that you'd want to do. I mean, personally, I've looked through all the checklist, the Kimbers nice enough sent out from the work that you've already done. And I could not identify, maybe Meredith or Christie or, you know, somebody else could. But I could not identify anything that you've not covered that you should cover. There's a couple of things that, you know, you haven't covered, but I don't think you would cover. Like guarantees and, you know, stuff like that. Rehabilitation afterwards. Well, you're not going to do those things unless you prove the application. Then you're going to say to the applicant, what's your plans for reformation? Where's your bond? You know, all that stuff. You're not going to do that if you're not going to approve the application. So other than that, I didn't see anything that wasn't done. And therefore, all the other stuff was, according to the checklist draft that I saw, was a go. So I think, as I said at the end of the last meeting, I think you just need a motion to deny and move on.
So one thing I want to clarify that it's not an issue is we don't have the minutes yet from
No.
the 22nd, 22nd, the 12th, sorry. So not an issue, but one of the things we did have was the language of the motion from the 12th. And, you know, I just, you know, and the board members should have received this from Kim, just with the, I think you had two edits on the motion, Kim. I think there was just one was a spelling one. And then we added the word standards to the motion. And just if I could, guys, just I know how much you love me reading aloud at storytime. What I'd like to just refresh the board where we were with that motion from the 12th. So bear with us, two motions. I've got one motion in front of me. What was the second one?
Meredith's idea.
So let me read through the one I have, all right? So this is where, this is from the recording too. So the motion was, the land use zoning ordinance has been found by the board to apply to this application. See board motion of October 20th, 2021 regarding same. Specifically, section 6B, 1.2 requires that private road that serve more than two lots must meet street and design construction standards of section 5.14, the subdivision ordinance. The quaring license ordinance, section 6.282, requires that the owner and operator ensure the maintenance of all infrastructure structures and their sites. The easement book 7146, page 329, provided by the applicant specifies the changes in maintenance must be approved by the fee landowner. As it is impractical to obtain the fee landowner's approval to repair and maintain the road from time to time ongoing, the applicant has not shown sufficient evidence of title right or interest as is required by the quaring license ordinance, Article 6, Section 6.1C. So here we are.
And then you have a second motion.
The draft is done. It has not been edited or approved. I apologize.
Yeah.
And I have it here if you would like me to read that.
Please.
Yes, the second one is Ms. Anastasia moved, with Ms. Randolph seconding. The applicant has a duty to ensure the maintenance of all infrastructures, structures, and their sites per section 6, 2A2 of the quaring licensing ordinance. But the applicant cannot fulfill that duty because of the limitations of the aforementioned easement.
So I would think if you, if there's nothing else, based on those two motions, just, you know, move to deny. Trap it up.
Right, well, for the first time in a long time, it's the board's time. So, you know, I turned to the board for comments, questions, motions. Here we are. And Dave, I'll start with you and put you on the spot. Any thoughts? You gotta unmute, Dave. Hit that mute button. Unmute.
Okay, done. I'm still having trouble with the fact that they have not met the requirement to give us estimated noise levels at the property lines. I know, I know we went through the noise part of the ordinance, but that, you know, 6.1 point J says that we need to, that they should provide us with estimated levels of noise at the property line. That hasn't been done.
So James had any thoughts on that comment relative to us having a previous?
Oh, yeah, I got lots of thoughts.
Finding on noise and
I got lots of thoughts. As you recall, you and I and everybody else sat here for God knows how long, how many meetings going through noise. You voted on it.
It was a three to two.
Right, it wasn't easy and it wasn't unanimous. If Dave wants to make a motion, which I highly do not recommend at this stage, to reopen up noise and get into an argument about it, I guess the question I would ask would be, is there any profit to it? Is it, you know, does it make your denial substantively better or substantively better? When there was no agreement on before that it was a reason to deny, to say, I want to reconsider that one issue. And furthermore, I don't want to hear from Mr. Bear. The board wants to hear from Mr. Bear again, or Mr. Mannahan, or the other lawyers, or the experts. I mean, if you're talking about something that Dave, Dave, if you think that you can do a motion to reconsider and surgically and discreetly have a vote on that only, I just frankly got to tell you, I think it's unfair. I don't know what the legality is of this, but I think it's unfair at this stage to come back after, I don't know, how long and redo this when you already voted on it. I just, I'm afraid of Alice going down a rabbit hole. That's all.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying. I still feel that the applicant has not provided that information. How I missed it when we were doing the noise, I'm not sure. But I guess at this point, what I'd like to know is how did the other board members feel about it? About that issue?
Christie? You're the Zoom moderator, remember?
I know, I know, I know, I know. The, carrying on with what he was saying is, I think where we left it last time was sort of this, like, existential question about is the fact that we have this issue with the road and however you want to say it, like the road piece doesn't work. Therefore, you can't get to the property and do anything there that is being covered by this. Like, is that so overriding that we don't have to go through the checklist and make sure that we've done our due diligence with things like Dave is talking about? So the example we used last time, kind of when we were talking about the totality of things, is like, at least the checklist I have, when I look at M under blasting, like, we know we talked about blasting. We know we said, I believe, that there wasn't going to be any blasting. But there's nothing on the checklist that says, no blasting. Now, maybe that doesn't matter because this road thing that we're talking about sort of supersedes all those smaller details because it's, you know, it's sort of like stops the whole consideration of the totality. So that's where we left it last time was sort of like, and I think we were too tired to make the decision right then. And that's why we want to kind of put a pin in it and come back to it is, do we have to make sure this checklist has everything, like the issue that Dave just brought up? Or do we just say, like, we're denying it based on this road issue? And that's a deal breaker.
Christie, on the updated checklist that Kim circulated, we did have a finding on blasting.
Okay, so maybe blasting isn't the right example, but like the example that Dave just gave about no estimated noise levels of the property lines, like, that's missing, right? But maybe it doesn't matter at all that it's missing because this whole road thing is like this big overriding sort of supersede everything else. So I think that's where we were kind of like trying to figure things out.
Dave?
So one reason why in being fair, that I brought that up, and there are, I think there are a few other things. The road issue is something that could be solved very quickly. All they have to do is approach the landowner and somehow acquire the rights they need. They could purchase, you know, that land. That's something that could be fixed. And then the applicant may feel that that's all that needs to be fixed. As long as, I just do not introduce that because we think that the road problem is but I think the applicant should know there are some other things that need to be addressed.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't understand that, Dave. If you look at noise on page 13 of the checklist, it says, under conclusions of law, the standards of section 6.2J have been met. I remember there was a vote. It was voted on, we decided, the board decided. So you want to, you want to go back and reconsider that?
I recall you saying at least once, and maybe two or three different times, that the board could go back and revisit it. And we were told that when, while we were in the process of voting on certain issues. And so I, why are you, why are you talking, why are you saying something different now?
No, I'm not saying anything different. I'm just asking you whether you want to do a motion to reconsider and go back and get into it. I mean, the way I see the checklist, I'll ask the chair how you use it. But the way I see the checklist is the checklist is a tool. You go through it all, you make notes, you take votes. Then at the end, to Dave's point, you make an overall motion to approve or deny. And then using the checklist to help you, you go through and you do your findings of fact, conclusions of law. But I don't think any of the particular matters are binding per se. But as a matter of practical, day-to-day, how you do stuff, and in fairness to the applicant, to the opposing people, the neighbors, it doesn't seem like good practice to do something and then two or three years go back and redo it. Unless there's, unless you have a new evidence or a burning desire or, and I'm not saying you shouldn't, Dave, if you think it's overwhelmingly important at this point that this be pointed out.
Christie?
Isn't it, didn't the conversation come up the last time too, that we could do a motion to deny based on one thing? But if we thought there were other reasons to deny, we should bring that forward.
That's right.
And what I heard you say when we opened the meeting is that you went through the checklist. And at least from your perspective, you know, as a solicitor, that you did not see any other reason to deny other than the road issue.
Yeah, because you all, you voted on everything else. I mean, I'm not trying to be argumentative here, but I looked at these things and I said, well, you voted on it.
But we, yeah, but and I think this, I'm channeling Meredith a little bit here is like, I mean, in theory, you could vote on every single thing on the checklist and still think in totality that perhaps this isn't something that serves the community at all when you look at the broader.
No, no, no. You can't do that. There's case law on that. And what you've got to do is you can, you can do something very similar. And normally what people do is they go through an entire application, they look at 57 standards, and they say, yeah, it meets all those. But then they look at the purpose. And having reviewed all the standards, they might say it doesn't meet the general welfare and safety of the town. What you would have to do in that case is you would have to make a standard by looking at what, citing to evidence in the record as to what the general health and safety and welfare of the town look like. And then point to evidence in the record that said that this application wouldn't meet those things. But you just can't go through everything and say, yeah, it meets all the standards and we don't like it.
Well, not that we don't like it, but that it doesn't meet the purpose, what was, sorry, I don't have the language right at my fingertips. The title and purpose of the ordinance, which talks about, you know, protecting and preserving the town, and, you know, there's like three specific things listed there. But the process you just laid out, that's new information for me, like sort of making that connection between the dots.
I went through this before. I don't know how long ago, because at one point, well, maybe Christie wasn't on the board at that point. You've been here for a while, haven't you, Christie?
I don't remember this conversation, but that doesn't mean anything. Anyway, it's more in-depth than I recalled because we even talked about this last time. Meredith, is this ringing a bell for you?
I'm sorry, my internet's been very unstable and I've caught maybe 50% of the conversation.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, you do have some weird echo.
Meredith, James is going to repeat that.
The idea is if you have a standard or a general purpose that you treat it like a standard that could be under attack, be void for vagueness. So the classic one is that it doesn't fit into the neighborhood. Or which is often, there's crazy analogy like that in conditional use permits, which I know you have a lot of them out there. Or you don't, you have to conserve natural beauty. So what the law court has said is where you have a standard that could be a little vague like that, what you're going to try to do is you're going to try to define what it is that you're talking about, and then be like Sesame Street, is this one like this one? So the classic way to do it is to say, it's not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So what do you do? You define the character of the neighborhood, and then you say whether this fits in. So back to Christie's point, the answer I think is no. You can't just throw it out because what you have to do is you have to say, under the purpose, these are the standards. And if you look at the purpose, there's about six or seven. Then you have to point to something in the record where there was evidence that showed that the standards, which you can talk about and help define what the standards are, haven't been met based on evidence was in the record. I mean, this is a, it's rarely done because it's difficult to do and usually subject to attack. I would think a good example, which might be done, for example, which wasn't done, as far as I remember, was the home values. People talk about
That's what I was just looking at, yeah.
Right, so that's a great one, a great example. Because if the neighbors had brought in three or four well-known local guys like King Pepper and Susan Ferante, and maybe Mrs. Davis from Southwest, and Kim Swan, you know, some well-known real estate agents, or Gary or the guy here, you know, the, some appraisers, and showed you that with the quarry and without the quarry, it was going to be worth less. You know, if a bunch of real estate agents come sitting and said, in my professional opinion, it'd be worth $100,000 less if the quarry's allowed to go in. And if that was done, then you might be able to use this section. And you could say, based on the evidence brought forward by so-and-so who brought these three real estate agents and two appraisers in, then we have evidence that it's, and then you could have a conclusion of law that the standard was not met and that the values were going to go down. But to see how specific and
Yeah.
You know, it's very regimented, how you do that. So it's not arbitrary and capricious, right? You've had evidence. And although I don't want him to talk, Mr. Bear, if we did let him talk, could talk about stuff that he's gone through in Lemoine, you know, about water testing and water quality. You have to have some evidence in the record. So look at those standards in the purpose. And I don't recall there was ever evidence of a value. There was, talk about it. But nobody brought in somebody to, you know.
No, I'm following you, and I do have a note next to title and purpose that talks about conditions tied to these. So I mean, that's, that makes sense, what you're saying. I just want to make sure that if we are, like, we have put, everybody has put a lot of work into this. And if we are going to have a motion to deny, I want to make sure that it's comprehensive. And that's why I'm kind of like exploring the edges of what is possible. It doesn't sound like that is possible.
I don't see any there. I mean, you want to go through the rest of them? I don't see any that are, I mean, you know better than I do what you had evidence on.
A lot of it was anecdotal. I mean, I, we didn't have, like, witness testimony that I'm aware of. I haven't been involved in this entire process, but I read all the, I read the cart, the Bayameth cart, like Tracy, and we, you know.
But between you and Tracy and Mr. Ashmore and Meredith and Bill, you know, if you look at something like values, one of you would remember, so-and-so talked about
Oh, yeah.
Right? Health, I mean, noxious fumes in the air that were going to poison everybody. That didn't come up. So, you know, there's, you got to have some meat. Other words, otherwise, you're just looking at it, as Bill likes to say, from the 40,000-foot level. But you can't just overall say, it's no good. You have to have a standard to point at. You don't make stuff up. You look at standards, set a bar, think of a high jump, and set the bar first, and then see if it gets over. It's religious. Regimented.
Again, just because I love reading aloud so much, let me, just for the record, Christie, I'm going to read through the purpose of the QLO. This is section 1.2. So "The purpose of this ordinance is to put into law minimum removal and reclamation standards and municipal procedures to regulate the quarrying of rock or stone while at the same time respecting the rights of pre-existing operations. These standards and procedures are intended to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare, and to minimize the adverse impact according to the town, abutting property owners, citizens of the town, and wildlife and natural resources by, A, preserving and protecting surface and groundwater quality and quantity for current and future." Preserving and protecting surface and groundwater quality and quantity for current and future use of the town and or its residents. B, preserving the town's natural resources, property value. And their future ability to be an asset to the town and its residents. And C, controlling the amount of potential pollution which can be discharged into the town's environment.
So if you're, you had a had significant testimony that. The dump trucks, there's gonna be too many trips down the road and kids playing the road and they're gonna be dangerous. Or. You had a wildlife biologist in command and said, oh, the deer, the raccoons, the whatever. Are being frightened away every time that they start to quarry, all the birds leave. I was involved in a thing in Indian Point where there was a piping plumber that was gonna be affected by a dock. See what I mean? That's very specific. There was a woman I remember who came in and talked about wildlife stuff. I don't remember all of that presentation, but. See what I mean? And each one of those things, is there anything that jumps out at you?
What about the general welfare?
The general welfare is an interesting point. I know that. I think you could do it. I wouldn't advise it, but you couldn't. It's up to you. You could say that. Mr. Shankovitz and the the Alins and others. Were on record as saying. That they moved here to for a quiet. Close to nature. Type of environment. That a lot of people in the area live like that. And they're either retired or their second homes and they would, that's the nature of Hall Quarry. And that their general welfare is negatively affected by this. Whether you're gonna be microscopic like that and talk about. The general welfare of the town as a whole. Or the general welfare of Hall Quarry and its residents, I don't know. But as long as you tie. Evidence that you had. To the motion that you want to make. If you think you can do that.
Any thoughts, Meredith?
Um, well, I guess on this whole. Issue, you know, I have no doubt that the presence of the quarry would depreciate the value of of the houses in the resident. That thought they were in a residential neighborhood. When the houses is absurdly close. I'm sure it would never have gotten developed if they had thought they were next to a active quarry. Uh, but I don't see, we got, we, this whole process has led us down a path. That the applicant. Was the, the application and the applicant led. And it's very step by step. There was never this opportunity. I mean, if if the opposition had ever wanted to bring forth the realtors to. Show proof that there was never that opportunity. I mean, that was not one of the specific. The the step by step, the way we got led down the path. I don't see where this general welfare, value of property and. Ever had. Had an opportunity to. Present itself. I guess that wasn't in the process as far as I'm concerned.
I disagree.
Don't we have a wealth of documents submitted by the property owners? Testifying through their experience with property values and health matters?
It seems to me that I do. I thought we we did get. And I don't, I don't recall where that ended up, that that. That there was plenty of evidence to show that. There was evidence anyway. I don't know to what extent. I don't recall. It was quite a while ago that we discussed property values and that it would depreciate.
I I don't think we had witnesses. I think we had information. But I don't think it was, you know, sort of holistically presented as like a pro con or point counterpoint. I I. There was material reference like that. I do remember reading it.
What did, in the context of what section would we have discussed it? I mean, why did that? How did we deal with that information?
Discuss them the noise.
You know, Meredith, it's, I totally hear you. It's been such a long process for this. And like I I do recall talk talking about, you know. You know, properties and property valuation, not more and more of like James was saying, you know, anecdotal. Matter, but it it seemed like it threaded through so many sections of review. You know, it wasn't just this concentrated point of reference, you know, that, you know, when we were having in-person. In-person hearings and we were allowing for public comment that there would be the, a butter that would stand up and. And be, and offer that concern about property valuation or that they bought property in Hall Quarry. And that they never real realized that there was an active quarry next door and their realtor never even disclosed it to them. You know, and then I think at one point we had a submittal from a realtor. Describing what the realtor's obligations are under. You know, their their professional regulations and something like that, but there was never that kind of quantified. Submittal or position, you know, say, hey, look, you know, you know, we're. You know, our property is gonna be devalued by X based on this professional's opinion. But I totally hear you. We never really had that specific. Review standard as we were waiting through all of this checklist, you know, it was just. You know, it would come up here and there.
Okay, the standard is from the, from the case of Mr. Bear is familiar with the town of Washington versus Lane. The standard is whether the people involved had an opportunity. To bring up the issues. And so if there's an argument like value, it's not up to the board to bring up the argument.
James, I'll tell you one thing. I think I can for myself one hundred percent say that we have given the public.
That's where I was coming.
Plenty of opportunity to communicate of above and beyond.
Over, God knows how many years. And so what you would say, if you were going to say what you were getting at, Meredith, you would say. And the neighbors did not have an opportunity to bring that issue up. And you can't just say that with a straight face. You can't say it.
I disagree. I mean, I I feel like we have very much step by step by step. There was some, if the neighbors had ever. Thought there would be an opportunity to, okay, you know, the next meeting will be discussing land values. Go out, you know, that they knew that there was a time to submit that, that they, that we have been so led. Even though it's taken years and we have allowed the public to inject. On specific subjects. But we are, have been very much led and there is not, there was never any, you know. I don't, I don't see that there was any, any reason why they would ever think, oh, at the next meeting, I'm gonna be, bring the realtors and I'm gonna discuss the land value.
Well, I I remember. I remember saying very specifically at meetings to. I think it was the Alan, but there were people sitting over to my left there, like three or four years ago. It was a discussion of values and I remember saying very clearly. If you want to bring in somebody, bring them in. So I I guess the thing is, if it was me and I was opposing this as an attorney. And I had a burning desire to discuss six or seven things that weren't on the agenda. I'd have found a way to get them talked about. And furthermore. If Mr. Pelagi, for example, had something like property values and he really wanted to discuss it. Or his clients really wanted him to discuss it. There was plenty of time, as the chairman said, over the last couple of years, for Mr. Pelagi to send a note. To the chair or to call me and say, listen, I want to talk about land values. And he didn't. So.
So here we are.
The the other issue that goes hand in hand with that is quality of life. For the people that live next to the. Next to the the quarry area. And I. I'm pretty well convinced that. I think that comes under. Protect public health. Those are, those are some of the reasons, I mean, that's one of the reasons why I'm. Uncomfortable in this thing.
You, you know, Dave, relative to the quality of life issue, I mean, we we had many letters and emails and. People on record talking about the concern of the the fact on the quality of life there, you know, I mean. You know, I, I mean, that that was a. Ever-present commentary from many of the butters, you know, that. You know, we we do have record of.
Can you tell me what's this quality of life?
Yeah, that's the only problem is it doesn't use. General welfare, yeah.
So are you saying, Dave, that under Article One, Section One Point Two? These standards and procedures are intended to protect the public health, safety and general welfare? And that. Overall, because of the evidence in the record that we saw. The applicant failed to. The the application should be denied because the. The applicant failed to show that they would. Their their applicant, their, their use would would protect the general welfare of the town?
How about that the opposition proves that the the quarry would be definitely, that the activity of the. Quarry is detrimental to their health?
Why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we cite specific? You know, common, specific of butters that have offered commentary around about the. The general welfare. Impact upon them.
I'd be, I would be satisfied. It's a little weak, but because you remember, I remember, I'm sure other board members remember. Numerous people talking about this affecting their quality of life. I know Mr. Shankit's for sure. Doctor being in his backyard and hearing this noise and being woken up in the morning by. That I think that's fine. I think there's, there was enough of them. Several people discussed it. And if you, you can go back in the minutes and.
Isn't quality of life essentially a, an assembly of the the purposes outlined there?
Pardon me?
There were stories specifically of health of people, you know. That that it was impacting people's health.
So the challenge there, not to be argumentative again, which I've been all along, but the challenge is. If you're the applicant, from their perspective. If they, if they, if you say to them, here's the bar for noise pollution. Here's the bar for keeping the diesel spills down. Here's the bar for. Trucks, for hours, for lighting. For hedges and buffering. Here's the standard. And the applicant has met all of those. And then you say, well, you failed to keep everybody happy. I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. All I'm saying is you want to think about that, too. They've got all these barriers they had to meet, which other than the road thing, they apparently met. I think you could go there.
Dave, what do you think?
Well, I I think I've well expressed my opinion. I just. I just feel really uncomfortable approving the application based on the testimony that we've heard from the neighbors. Um, and their, their quality life and that, the paragraph that that you read is, I don't think has been addressed.
I would. I would think of the repeated. Statement from the town attorney saying that we can. Go back and peel the pineapple if the board. Felt, you know, if any pineapple were to be peeled, I I would think that the general purpose section. Is a pretty key section that in the final deliberation. Of the board. Would be relative or at the, at that point, I mean it. Okay, yeah, we never really dug our heels into that. That overarching purpose of the QLO because we had some pretty specific marching orders through the process. Okay, here we go, you know, here's, here's, here's the checklist and here's the process and. This is a first time for all of us and this is the path we need to follow. But I think the understanding that the board had throughout that process was at the end. Wherever we may be and in our final deliberations that we could discuss what we needed to to discuss. And I think that that's where the discussion of section one point two, the purpose of the QLO key in. And here we are.
So can you get a motion?
Can I just? Uh, that the context of it, can you all hear me? It's, it's the fact that we are reviewing this as an existing quarry. The existence of this quarry has been such for the last twenty years that a residential neighborhood. Developed around it and that realtors sold properties saying that's an abandoned quarry. So due to the choices of the quarry owner, they led the neighborhood to believe that it was an abandoned quarry. Whether that holds water in a port of law or not, that's, that's the fact. And that quality of life that we're talking about. Is about, you know, the the ordinance isn't really designed, I didn't feel that it was designed. To deal with new activity, that that there's a very different activity happening. So everything. Uh, the managing of noises sort of that, well, they're grandfather to it, but they haven't been making the noise. But they're grandfathered to whatever noise they want to make, you know, it's sort of, we didn't, we don't have proper regulations. Um, and I don't know that that has, I know that doesn't have any legal grounds, but I feel like that should entwine with the quality of life of. This is a problem because the quarry led all of these people to think that it was an abandoned. Whether it was, it holds legal ground, they, they did lead the neighborhood and the town to think that it was an abandoned quarry. And it developed around it that way. And we had to review it as an existing quarry.
You know, when. You know, one other. You know, one thing I think about is like what the, you know, I forget how many years ago it was, but under, you know, the, the. We had the land use ordinance amendment increase that reduced the minimum lot size in Hall Quarry. Didn't we, Kim? So essentially the. You know, the potential residential density of development, you know, could be much greater. In. In the village of Hall Quarry now and, you know, again, relative to the board's mission. And the purpose, you know, under one point two of the QLO. You know, that, that, that could have over time a much, much broader impact. under 1.2 of the QLO, you know, that, that, that could have over time a much, much broader impact. I mean, you, you could have much denser, and we will eventually, you know, with all the pressures on, you know, grow upon, on the island and the town, and that, that could be a much more significant residential area. So I think in the bit, you know, again, back to this 40,000-foot look at all of this, I, you know, I think there's a potential motion here that, you know, the board should be making in the context of, you know, our, the overarching mission of the, of the board and the purpose of the QLO.
I mean, that, that's how, well, that's kind of how I started this discussion, but it sounded like, unless we could really strongly connect the dots between statements in the purpose and like standards and conditions tied to those, from a legal perspective, it wouldn't be very meaningful.
But, so one thing I'd keep going back to is, Christie, we've been hearing from the same abutters for as, as long as I've been involved, and it eight years. And with some, you know, very specific, um, you know, things on record from them, and I don't know if it would strengthen a potential motion, but if you made reference to specific abutters, and, and there are comments over the, the years relative to quality of life and general welfare and.
I, I don't know which of processes, but you might want to do what I was suggesting earlier about going with,
Yeah.
some general things and then fill it in later. You know, the, um, you, if you want to do, uh, complete minutes or, I don't know, I just don't, I don't want to head, sit here for a couple hours digging through the minutes or have another meeting to find, you know, so-and-so said six meetings ago.
Believe it or not, but that's what I was gonna say next.
All right.
I, I hear what you're saying, Bill, and I, I agree with you. The one thing that gives me just a teeny bit of pause though on that is, in most instances where something was being looked at, whatever that factor was, is we often had, you know, we saw it from two different perspectives, we saw it from the perspective of, you know, the community, and then we saw it from the perspective of, you know, the, the people wanting to, um, do the work with the quarry. And so, like, I can say, um, this is, this is, this is going to impact my health because it's at this, this decibel level. But somebody else can come in and say, well, research has shown, you know, it has to rise to this level to be helping. So I don't know that we've, we've certainly had anecdotal submitted conversations, uh, public comment on these things, um, but I don't think that they were, and I don't know that this is a big deal, but I, they weren't presented in a way that we had both sides. I mean, with the heat, with the sound we did, but not specifically like tied to health, like on both sides. So I'm, I'm just bringing that up, and that's not a deal breaker, but I just feel like that information is a little bit different than some of the other, you know, witness testimony that we had.
But keep, keeping in mind that the way the purpose reads is, it says, the purpose is, of this ordinance is to put into law minimal standards, and then it says, to do the following, and it mentions what it wants to do, protect the safety and health and so on, right? Preserve the town's natural resource property values, control potential pollution. So it talks about what it's doing and why it's doing it. You then have pages and pages of very specific standards that are addressed. So, for example, with, with something about water, wastewater, there's, there was all kinds of very specific standards about groundwater and surface water. You know, so myself, when I'm looking at that, I'm thinking, the purpose guides you, but there was, you specifically said as a group that those things were met.
Well, I, I agree with that, Dave, and I kind of go back to Meredith's earlier comment about, you know, this, this is something we, we never really touched upon yet because we just never got there yet, as we were, had our specific marching orders. And I, I think that much, there, there's many things in the purpose that can be kind of crossed off through the process we went through, but there's a couple things in there that, that, that weren't.
I, I see the purpose as being a guide to how you understand the standards.
Yes.
So, for example, on noise, one of the things you would want to say on noise is how do we look at noise? Well, we don't want to have property values go down, people be annoyed, be upset, and so on. So I think the purpose is something which shows you how to understand or interpret those standards. But the purpose itself is not a specific standard. Good, but I don't think that's the way to do it.
But the, the noise thing specifically, just, the, all we were allowed to say, to discuss was whether they were trying to reduce the noise using best practices or whatever. It's all this vagueness that we kept on discussing, like, what is too much noise? Are you going to make too much noise? Let's determine what too much noise, don't go there. We can't, we can't regulate the decimals and we, it was just this vague, they're trying. The standard says they have to show that they're trying, and they've proven they're trying. So the purpose of the law is that we're supposed to protect their health and their land values, but the standard just says, as long as they prove that they're, they're trying, you gotta let them go, and it's, so it's, it's contradictory to the purpose of the ordinance.
I agree, but you, you voted on noise, right?
We did.
So.
Under what our restrictions were, but not in, in context of what the purpose, these, this original section. Only in that very focus, this is what we're allowed to discuss, don't discuss anything else. I mean, we got that all the time, it's.
What the standard said was, the best practicable means of reducing noise. So, I, I think what you could have said was, you know, practically speaking, uh, it's bad for the health and welfare of the neighbors, and, uh, practically speaking, they're gonna have to spend $27 million to put a dome over the thing. If you thought that was the best practical means. But what you did, if I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, was you looked at several possible things that could be done, and you said practically speaking, what can be done here? And are there, are they doing that? And the vote was three to two that they were. I would think that you would look at health, noise as pollution, while you were discussing that standard. I think that's all part of that.
My feeling when we voted was that we were given, where there was nothing in the ordinance that we could enforce beyond, they're, they're giving it, they're giving, they're giving it their best try, they're making some effort to reduce the noise, this.
So your argument is with the, the weak ordinance?
Yes, well, I definitely think it was a very weak ordinance, we, I mean, we repeatedly said we need, we need some meat, we need something that we can, there's no possibility of, there's no criteria for them to pass for us to say that they haven't achieved the standard because we're not, we don't run, anyway, it was just, it was extra, it was just sort of, I felt like we just got to a point where we said, well, according to the ordinance, I guess they've done what they can, but that, you're now telling us that they, we could have turned around and said, well, it's gonna impact, have an effective impact on the health, that was not the fact that we were led down.
So if you, you're like a judge, it doesn't like the law, but you've got the law, and you can only deal with the law that you have.
We're not like a judge because we don't, we're not lawyers. You're the lawyer, and you're now telling us that we could have handled it in a different way than I feel that we were led to believe we could handle it at the time.
I'm sorry if you thought that I did that. I don't think I'm leaving anybody, I think you're a pretty strong, independent-minded group.
We are, but we're not lawyers.
Dave?
So, um, what is, what's Tracy have to say about this?
I think we're stuck between a rock and hard place right now.
That's an excellent analysis.
Yeah, so, pun intended.
I also, I didn't hear what she said.
Uh, Tracy, say it again.
I said we're stuck between a rock and a hard place.
She meant to say we're stuck between granite and a hard place.
It wouldn't be a granite rock, would it?
Don't take it for granted.
So, so, so in the context of where we're at and what we're trying to work towards here, you know, is, is the, the final motion of denial, you know, we're trying to strengthen whatever motion there may be, and I think we just all need to try to move towards that.
I disagree.
And James, of course, disagrees.
I, I think you should, you should deny or approve, if you're going to deny, you should cite all of the reasons you have for denial. And then, when the court decides, well, that reasons one and two are, are wrong, they might say number three is right and the whole thing should be denied anyway. That's why you get as many as you have in there. It's not necessarily strengthening the denial, it's just making sure you haven't missed anything that's reasons for it.
So, so we have something, I mean, we have our motions from, from the 12th.
Yep. And you can make this motion, I'm, if you do, you could make it, and I just don't think, I don't think you're gonna get any reason legally, but if you want to make it, you could just say, based on the testimony of numerous neighbors, that their, um, welfare was adversely affected, we think the, the application should be denied. And then.
I think we should include that.
You know, I, I, one thing that does, you know, to Meredith, I feel like, is it also acknowledges our acknowledgement of, you know, all of the, the, the butters and Hall Quarry communities' input over the years, you know, and I think it, it would make the, I, I feel like it would also make the, the motion a little bit more human, too.
Yeah.
Um, Bill, to add just a little bit to what you said about the, the increased density in the quarry, in this, in the future, it could affect a lot more people. Um, we, we've focused most of our thoughts on, um, the neighbors in just one direction, but at some point in time, there's gonna be neighbors all around that whole 360 degrees. So I don't, I don't think that we've, um, well, I, I think that's an issue that I don't think we, we've ever really discussed.
You know, Dave, may, maybe it's relative, something like that is, is, is addressed in, again, a potential motion, putting, uh, you know, relative to the purpose of the whole thing, that, you know, Hall Quarry is gonna change, you know, the frameworks are already there, you know, and, you know, and, and decisions, you know, the board makes are gonna have, you know, far-reaching impacts into the future, you know, and I think that's a primary consideration, again, relative to the, our purpose and the QLO's purpose. So I mean, maybe there is a motion structured relative to the changing dynamic in the, in, in the zoning of Hall Quarry, maybe there is a motion relative to the general, the impact on general welfare of direct abutters or, uh, immediate community members, uh, as seen through testimony over the years, uh. Maybe there's just a motion citing our previous motion from the 12th, and it stays there. But, you know, we, we gotta gravitate towards something here.
Um, all right, I, I could put forth something just as a straw dog. Would you like me to do that, or is this not the right time?
Please, go for it.
Um, I'm gonna need some help, but, um, Heidi, are you ready?
I'm ready, just speak slowly.
Okay. Um, okay, so just to start off, uh, based on the testimony of numerous neighbors over the years.
Direct abutters.
Well, it was more than direct abutters, though.
Yeah, and well, maybe you add to it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Direct abutters and numerous neighbors and beyond, and that their general, over the years, that their general where, welfare would be adversely impacted.
Was.
Okay.
Uh, would be adversely impacted by sharing a residential neighborhood and community.
Okay, hold on. Okay.
Uh, neighborhood and community with an operating quarry.
Okay.
Semi-colon, and this is, this addresses the second part. Um, and, uh, this adverse impact is likely to be exacerbated.
Hold on. Yep.
By, uh, something like, I don't know, Bill, you might need to come here, exasper- exasperated by increases in, oh, I guess it's decreases in, uh, lot size and resulting density.
Hold on. Okay.
Therefore, we deny, this is one of the reasons for denying this application, something like that.
Okay.
That's a straw dog, so anybody can do what they want with that.
Kim, do you know when the land use ordinance changed with that minimum lot size?
Um, I think it was like two years ago.
Yeah, I think so.
It was pre-COVID.
Certainly pre-COVID.
Maybe '97 to 2019. But without knowing for sure.
So what's that got to do with anything? Increased lots.
We should maybe cite it.
Why, can you connect it for me again?
Are you talking to me?
I think.
Anybody, why the increase in density has anything to do with this application?
Because it may have a broader impact on a wider range. Because it may have a broader impact on a wider range of potential residents of the Village of Hall Quarry, because more people can live there.
So the adverse impact will be to more people.
Oh, I see.
I think that's in the context of the general wel- welfare discussion.
I understand that the, the voters voted in the ordinance saying that it was possible to do that in that zone. For better or worse, right?
I, I think the increased, um, allowed density shows the trend in the area for, um, more, um, intense development, so that it would impact, go from a rural type of development to a more residential.
Sounds residential development.
And did you have, did you have health, safety, and general welfare in there?
Uh, we could add that. I, I only was focusing on general welfare because that's what we were talking about, but we can change that to, um, based on testimony, um, from, you know, numerous neighbors, direct debutters over the years, that their health, safety, and general welfare would be adversely impacted.
And we have to be careful about that, James.
What?
Um, yes and no. There's, uh, there, there's case law and there's stuff in the MMA manuals about that point. And on the one hand, it's hard to cite to the record as a whole. But on the other hand, if you say there were numerous instances, the only place I think you'd go wrong if there weren't numerous instances, you know, if you can easily go through and find a bunch of them, I think that's fine. Because it's a general point, it's you're generally making, and it's a general statement that they would have been making, such as, you know, I couldn't sleep when the damn thing was running.
But, but I think about like the reference to safety, you know, like, you know...
Safety's a different matter.
Safety is a different matter.
That's a different matter.
So we would say health and general wel- welfare.
Health and general welfare, yeah. Safety, I mean, for safety, you have to prove somebody's gonna run somebody over. There's psychological damage that was testified to, that's safety.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Yeah, someone's gonna fall in a hole, something like that. I don't like the part about the density. I don't think that's relevant, but...
You know, again, I keep coming back to, you know, trying to humanize the motion, you know? And that what Hall Quarry is today is, is gonna be, is not gonna be the Hall Quarry in 20, 25 years.
But the, the, any applicant who comes to you and says, "I wanna build X", and you say, "10 years from now, we're gonna look like Y", and they look at you and go, "So, the law today is this, and says I can do this with my property"?
Like, like, in the context of subdivision review, we've got a specific criteria of density of development in consideration.
That's not in here, right?
Yeah, I, it's not, it's not. But what, density of development, I think, is, is very relative when you're, you're talking about the, the pre-existing condition of what you're proposing to construct within. But then I think you, you often hear during deliberation on those kind of things, "Okay, the density of development is gonna increase over time, and what kind of complications are gonna arise out of that"? You know, so I, I think, I think it is very relative, because, you know, you're painting a very clear picture about the importance of context.
Yeah.
I, I think the other thing, the, the other thing it, it is, is I think it shows it's trending towards more residential, it's not trending towards mixed use, trending towards commercial. You know, we have other communities that are trending in other directions.
Well, Bill, you get a motion. I'll give it a second and...
Well, I mean, it, it probably needs to be reread, right, and worked a little bit.
Yes, please.
All right, you want me to read that, Kristy?
I make a motion, you read my motion. Yes, please.
Based on the testimony of the Butters and numerous neighbor, neighbors over the years, that their health and general welfare would be adversely impacted by sharing a residential neighborhood and community with an operating quarry. This adverse impact is likely to be exacerbated by decreases in lot sizes and resulting density. Therefore, we deny the application.
Minimum lots, decreases in minimum lot size.
Yeah, thank you.
I have two words to add. I'll say, you want your, if you want to.
Lot area.
And Tracy?
When you were talking, when you referred to the residential neighborhood, can you try putting in front of that immediately adjacent residential neighborhood? Which is gonna add, you have, in your sentence, you had to do with a residential neighborhood. You wanna make it clear that they're immediately adjacent.
Okay, so by sharing a residential neighborhood and community with an operating quarry, where would we put the, the couple places it could go, is what I'm thinking.
You know, the reason I kept it so broad, Tracy, I, I don't, I, I think squeezing something like that in is fine, but the reason I kept it so broad is because we were starting to get testimony from people who lived on some sound.
Yeah.
About how the sound, yeah.
Okay, nevermind.
But, I mean, if you wanted to, you could say, sharing a, you know, adjacent, close proximity, whatever residential neighborhood and the broader community.
Isn't this a, uh, isn't the zone of the whole Hall Quarry neighborhood? What is the zone? Uh, is, is it, is this quarry a non-conforming use in a residential zone?
Says it's R1.
It is, it's not adjacent, it is in a residential zone. It's a non-conforming use in a residential zone.
It is in the zone. I think I was thinking of it as up against other people's properties, which is why we're... I, I don't have the word adjacent in there, I have residential neighborhood.
Well, I think there was some discussion of saying that it was adjacent, and, well, okay, so... But I think it's important, that it is in a residential neighborhood. It's, it's zones a residential neighborhood, it is a residential neighborhood.
Should we make reference to the R1 residential zone? And should this, should this motion be tied to the previous motion from the 12th?
No.
No, they're two separate...
Three, yeah.
Not unless you wanna defeat both of them at once.
Got, got it.
You might have changed, Heidi, the word "this" to "which".
And which adverse impact, is that what you're saying?
No, the, the, the idea about the, uh, the, the stuff that I don't wanna include about the stuff in the future.
Uh, okay, what I have is, uh, I'm gonna read it again, you, you stop me.
Yeah.
Based on the testimony of the Butters and numerous neighbors over the years, that the health and general welfare would be adversely impacted by sharing a, do we want zoned R1? They're sharing a zoned R1 residential neighborhood.
Sharing a commercial quarrying activity with...
With an operating quarry, is how it goes.
With an operating quarry within a, a residential zone.
Okay, uh, so sharing... I'm not sure how to write that. Uh, impacted by sharing a residential neighborhood and community with an operating quarry is what we have. Where would I put the zone R1, or do we need the zone R1?
Do we need the zone R1?
Oh, look at me, I hate the motion.
All right, I'm gonna keep going, but you guys gotta think about that. And this adverse impact is likely to be exacerbated, is that the, this?
In which, rather than in this, in which...
And which adverse impact is likely to be exacerbated by decreases in minimum lot area and resulting density therefore, oh, and resulting density, therefore...
Increasing density.
Uh, decreases in minimal lot size and resulting in density, therefore we deny the application is what we have.
No, decreases in minimum lot size and increases in density.
Yeah, you need something qualitative on density.
Can, can we put something in the way that we've, um, it's the combination of, of a quarry and a residential neighborhood? So the courts have told us that the quarry is existing, so it has been there. Uh, can we say that the review of the specific activities is not compatible uh, with the residential neighborhood, so that we can, so, so some attention with what we reviewed in this application is new activities. Legally, it's not defined as it's, it was a quarry, it, it has been a quarry, but they haven't been doing, they haven't been using these tools, they haven't been cutting stone. Um, and that is what isn't compatible with a residential neighborhood.
Don't you think operating quarry cover, like if we say operating quarry, 'cause like when, what I heard is when the quarry was there, but people lived next to it, but didn't believe it was operating, it was compatible, because people would walk through it or use it as a space, so like, it, it's the operating quarry that's incompatible, not the vestiges of an old quarry. I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's, I, I, you know, that's, that's legal, that's where you need to be a lawyer to understand the difference of what we're talking about here. Is it activity, is it operating, is it...
I think you're pulling yourself in knots for something that doesn't strengthen anything, that you're going around in circles for something that doesn't make much of a difference one way or another.
So why wouldn't we say a, a residentially zoned neighborhood?
I like that.
I like that, too.
Did you get that, Heidi? Residentially zoned neighborhood.
All right, do you wanna hear it again?
Yes, please.
Uh, based on the testimony of the Butters and numerous neighbors over the years, that the health and general welfare would be adversely impacted by sharing a residentially zoned neighborhood and community with an operating quarry, and which adverse impact is likely to be exacerbated by decreases in minimal lot area and resulting in increasing density. Therefore, we deny the application.
I just have one, it, it, does it make a difference to say direct a Butters or a Butters, or is that redundant?
It's definitely redundant, yeah.
Is it redundantly redundant? Okay, then just keep a Butters, you don't have to do direct a Butters, okay.
I mean, should the, go ahead.
Aside from general criticism, which I've already done, um, I think I would specifically criticize this for not saying would be and has been. But let me, I don't want Heidi to write this down, but I, I wanna just give you a, an alternative motion, which I think is simpler and much better, similar.
Why don't you just let me write it down?
Well, because they're gonna attack it before I get through it.
Just, just go for it.
All right, I'd rather, I'd rather just say it, and then I'll, then I'll read it to you slowly. The, the board heard testimony, um, from numerous neighbors, which testimony over the years, and that testimony is in, in the record, that to the effect that they lived in a quiet ru- ru- rural residential area, and that their health, especially their healthy state of mind and general welfare, were negatively affected by quarrying operations. Therefore, the application should be denied, as the quarry use would negatively impact the public health and general welfare of the surrounding residential neighborhood. See, that's a much simpler, but as the chair said, human. Without dodging the stuff about what might happen in the future with density, without worrying about whether it's an R1 or an R2, and it sticks right to the facts of what happened.
Should, should either motion, which were to be carried, um, tie back to the purpose of the QLO?
You could. But, you know, it's pretty obvious what you're doing, right? That you're talking about the purpose, 'cause there's not a standard to tie to.
Isn't specificity better?
In general, yes. So I think you're simply, all you do have to do is say, before you even start any of this, just say, "Looking at and thinking of section 1.2 of the QLO".
I think we should add that.
Do you want, do, and so I wanna ask the board, or I wanna ask the chair to ask the board, whether Kristy, Dave, they, or whether you all like my more simple approach any better.
Well, let's read the two, if we can, Heidi.
I, yes, I can't read, I'm trying to call yours, but yes.
Yeah.
Based on the testimony, I'm sorry?
Before he does, I, I suggest that we add what I said before about the other one, a residentially zoned neighborhood, instead of...
Yeah, she got that.
And, and can we add at the beginning about...
Zone in there.
Section 2.1?
Uh, 1.2.
Yeah, yeah. Looking at and thinking of section 1.2, purpose of the QLO.
Sorry, I'm thinking. Okay, uh, I think I, this is what I heard, looking at section 1.2 of the QLO, and based on the testimony of the Butters and numerous neighbors over the years, that their health and general welfare would be adversely impacted by sharing a residentially zoned neighborhood and community with an operating quarry, and which adverse impact is likely to be exacerbated by decreases in minimal lot area and resulting in increasing density, therefore we deny the application.
That's story number one.
James, you wanna read yours?
Mine, and I'll go slow, so Heidi can write it down.
I'm ready when you are.
Thinking and considering article 1.2 of the QLO.
Yep.
Comma. The board heard testimony.
Hold on. Okay.
Over many years, from numerous neighbors.
Okay.
Comma.
Yep.
Which testimony is in the record in several locations?
Hold on. Hold on. Okay.
Comma, that they lived?
Yep.
In a quiet rural residential neighborhood.
Yep.
And that? Their health?
Yep.
Comma, especially their healthy state of mind, comma.
Yep.
And general welfare?
Okay.
Were? And will be? Negatively affected by quarrying operations.
Okay.
Period.
Done it?
No, that's just a halfway.
Okay.
Therefore, comma? I move that? The application should be denied.
Okay.
As the?
Hold on. Yep.
As the quarry use? Would negatively, negatively impact?
Yep.
The public health and general welfare?
Okay.
Of the surrounding residential neighborhood.
Is that it?
That's it, period. Never mentioned you're the best. I don't know if I could write that down that fast myself.
And I love it's in pencil.
Six pencils every time.
Either one, I don't think they're gonna hold up in court, but? They are a human? Response to the application. And Mr. Ashmore and Meredith have been talking about this for? Mr. Kylie before, for years.
Joanne.
This is their complaint. That's essentially their complaint. Then as Meredith was getting at earlier, despite all the nitpicking over all the standards? The real complaint is, people don't want it and they're upset and they think it's, it's not good for their community.
Heidi, can you read that, James, when all, all of them? Testing, huh? Yeah. Okay. So this is attorney Collier's, thinking and considering article 1.2 of the QLO? The board heard testimony over many years from numerous neighbors? Which testimony is in the record in several locations? That they lived in a quiet rural residential neighborhood? And that their health, especially their healthy state of mind? And general welfare? Were and will be negatively affected by quarrying operations. Therefore, I move that the application, that the application, yes, should be denied? As core use would negatively impact the public health and general welfare? Of the surrounding residential neighborhood.
Okay, guys, A or B? Any modify, modifications, any discussion?
I, uh, the, it seemed a little, it'd be nice to include a fact that it's in a residential zone. That it's a non-conforming use in a residential zone or something, cause it's? It is all very clearly stated, but it doesn't have any? It, it sounds like it's just that this is how they feel. Um, and there is actually backing up of the, the town chose to z- zone? This area as residential.
And it's a pre, the quarry is a pre-existing legal non-conforming use?
According to the judge. The judge didn't come right out and say that, but? We tried to say otherwise and the judge sorta said that, so basically that's how we had to treat it.
Well, I think it's, some, I think what, what James made up is very clear, I just like something saying that it's?
With?
That it's, they are in a residential neighborhood. It's not just how they feel about it.
So if you, if you wanted to add that last part Meredith was saying, Heidi?
Yeah.
I think we could put it in as a, uh? Uh, either like a hyphen? And a hyphen, so? So if you could read the part which says quiet rural?
All right, are you ready?
Yeah.
That they lived in a quiet rural residential neighborhood.
Hyphen.
Hyphen.
Indeed, comma.
Yep.
The quarry is proposed for a, a, an area that is zoned?
Okay.
What's its own?
Residential one.
Yeah, which is?
Residential what?
Residential, residential one where, comma, where? Commercial and industrial uses are not allowed. Is that true?
Sub-commercial is allowed in the, in the residential.
Industrial uses are generally not allowed. Residential one, comma? Where industrial uses are generally not allowed. Hyphen. How about that Meredith?
That sounds great, thank you, James.
I try to be helpful. Heidi, being the baby of 10 kids and being helpful, it's not easy.
You know, I, I still think that there should be some language about how the residential? Residentially zoned neighborhood? Is, is evolving? And it's, and it's density isn't evolving and the impact and reach of this? Is going to increase because there's going to be more people living there over time? Thanks to the land use ordinance change.
But you're the board and you can do whatever you want, as your legal counsel, what I would say is that? That's a bad idea. And the reason, the reason it's a bad idea is that? You're essentially getting into, I think, legally speaking, be a dangerous area, because what you're saying is? We're talking about an application now? And envisioning what's gonna happen in the future? And ruling on something that might happen, which might not? So, I mean, it's all speculative.
Yeah.
So you're already on the edge because you're looking at a purpose thing rather than a specific standard. Now you wanna go even further and say? And furthermore, the moon might be blue in Paraguay next November.
No, it's not.
It's all speculation, right?
Well, it's not speculation, I mean, there's, you know, there's? The framework is there.
Why, what I'm saying is the challenge, if you were the applicant, would be this. You'd be sitting there and you're saying? Not only do I have to present an application to meet the standards of today? Or what might happen in the future, that's impossible. So, I mean, that's why I think it's so speculative.
Unfortunately, I agree with, with, uh, James mostly because you're saying? It, it, the neighborhood will develop accordingly to what is there, so if there is a quarry to be allowed? There will be less development, residential development around it, if there's not a quarry, it will? Increase the residential, I mean, it's? The development is in response to the conditions, so you're? Yeah, I guess, I'm afraid I don't? You are projecting into the future? And I don't see that it is relevant.
Well, we're not.
We're not.
We, we're not projecting into the future when we state that? The, uh, density? Allowed density, um, has been increased recently. I mean, if, if, if we're gonna say anything about that, I think we should just make it factual that? Uh, recent changes in the zoning have allowed in? The area and it could, it, could have the potential to affect more people. I mean, that's kind of what we're saying.
But the people in the future who choose to move there, whether it's in more density, if there's a quarry there? They'll move in knowing that there's a quarry there. Problem is the people, all the people who developed around it, not knowing that there was a quarry there. It, it will change the way the town de- develops depending on how this ultimately comes out.
And what I, what I'm trying to do in wording the motion differently? Rather than talking about what I was afraid Meredith was driving at, which is, you know, doesn't like the law, therefore we should vote against it. I was trying to make the motion more reflect? What we heard from the board, the people who are here, which is? They, it negatively affects them and the application should be denied because it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. So trying to directly tie it to the purpose. And I think what the board is trying to do with this other motion is? Say, we don't like the law? And this is bad zoning. See the difference in the two approaches?
Yeah, I agree 100% with what you're saying.
There, even though I think both motions are? May not hold up in court, I, I kinda, I think mine's legally speaking is probably a little bit? More likely to hold up in court.
I think of purpose being relative to here and tomorrow. But? I think that was just my only? Again, my only comment about that was just? Painting the context of tomorrow, that decisions we're making today are, are supposed to? Stand, hopefully stand the test of time and, um? Enable the, the community to continue, you know, as, as? As best as it can.
But you're talking religiously.
Yeah, I?
That's religiously.
I'll, I'll stop on that.
You should be a politician.
No. I'm okay with James' motion as voted.
Want to hear it one more time?
Oh, please.
Thinking and considering article 1.2 of the QLO? The board heard testimony over many years from numerous neighbors? Which testimony is in the record in several locations? That they lived in a quiet rural residential neighborhood? Indeed, the quarry is proposed in an area that is zone? Residential one? Where industry uses are generally not allowed?
Industrial uses.
I'm sorry, it's just very tiny. Uh, look at her, where industrial uses are generally not allowed? And? That their health, especially their healthy state of mind? And general welfare? Were and will be negatively affected by quarrying operations? Therefore, I move that the applic-? That the application should be denied? As the quarry use would negatively impact the pu- public health and general welfare? Of the surrounding residential neighborhood.
You gonna move that?
I'll make that a motion or I'll second it, whichever we're at.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Wait, okay, wait a minute.
I'll, I'll second it.
Meredith made the motion, Tracy seconded it. Any further discussion? None heard, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
And myself, William Hanley, aye.
So, unless you got something else, I think it might be appropriate to get a motion to say? Based on our previous three motions? Citing reasons to deny? Let me touch, wait, so Heidi can write this down. Are you ready, Heidi?
Yeah, I'm, I'm writing.
Do you want me to make?
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to say that I make that motion?
Not yet, I'm not finished yet.
Based on the previous three motions citing reasons to deny?
They're talking our.
Is on our. For previous three motions citing reasons to deny?
The application.
Yep.
I move that the application be denied. And I think, Mr. Chairman, once you make that, get a second vote on it, it's time to, you know? Almost quit.
Anybody wanna make that motion?
Sure, I'll do it.
Anastasia, second.
Any further discussion?
And we haven't voted on the other two motions, have we?
I know, I was thinking.
Yeah.
What do you mean the other two motions?
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you voted on them last, last meeting.
Yeah, we did.
The previous motions were voted at the last meeting, yes.
You're trying to scare us, Dave.
I can, I'll accept, but?
Like a booby man, you, you don't know it like this, trying to scare us. Halloween's all over. Jeez.
All right, so we have a motion and a second.
Or, um, Christie is second.
Christie's?
Meredith and Christie.
Meredith and Christie. Any further discussion, Dave?
Nope.
All right, I'll call the vote. Meredith?
Aye.
Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Tra- Doug, Doug. It's been a long eight years. Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye.
Yep, and they were both voted on.
Got it.
So is that motion carried?
That motion carried.
So, um, do you have any other business, maybe it's time to go home?
So under item three on the agenda, is there any other business tonight? None heard? Anybody wanna make a motion for adjournment?
Anastasia, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Any further discussion?
Another five years, let's go for it, no.
Careful what you wish for.
All right, all those in favor, Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Dave? Dave?
I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. It's been a long road, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
See you, everybody.
Thank you.